Good afternoon. This is the Guilford Board of Education. It is Monday, May 13th. We invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am going to have a couple of requests to add, two things to the agenda. I would first, however, like to do number three so that we are acting as a full board. So we are very excited tonight to be welcoming Amy Fennelosa to the Board of Education. The Board of Education conducted a number of interviews last month following a call for anyone interested who was a member or is a member of the Independent Party to fill the vacancy left by Mr. Noel Petra, who served with us for over two years, who is also a member of the Independent Party. We did appoint as a board Amy Fennelosa, but have not yet had her take oath of office, and we have the opportunity to do that tonight. It is my great privilege to invite Mr. Bill Blos to administer that oath. For those who are unaware, Mr. Blos served on the Board of Ed for 20 years, I believe 14 as Chair, and it was certainly my great pleasure to serve eight years with him. So thank you for coming tonight.
My pleasure.
Joining us. And Amy, we would invite you to go and take the oath of office.
Right over here. Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as a member of the Guilford Board of Education to the best of your abilities, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury.
Yes, I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I think you will find that there is no position in government, I'm not totally objective on this comment, I think you'll find that there's no position in government, town government in any way, that where you can have a greater influence on the greatest number of people and the quality of life in Guilford. So congratulations on the appointment. I look forward to watching your work and along with the rest of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Blos. And Amy, welcome.
Thank you. I'm delighted to be here. Thank you, Arne.
So again, Amy is joining us tonight. She will at times tonight, for instance, when we approve minutes, you will hear abstaining because she was not here for those, but she is now a full-fledged member of our board and will be joining us in all board activity as we move forward. So it is wonderful to have you. So I would like to make, ask to entertain a couple of motions that will kind of change the agenda a little bit. One is I'm requesting the addition of a very brief executive session to occur at the very end of the meeting, so after 13 and before 14, to prepare for the superintendent's evaluation. This is something we do every year. Is there a motion to add an executive session to the end of the meeting after 13?
So moved.
Second. Sorry, Moira. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, that's unanimous. Second change is to add Agenda Item 10.13, which will be to act on additional participation in the Slim Nation Program. Is there a motion to add that to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then I would like to, if folks are willing, we have these, the opportunity tonight to present two CAE student awards, and I would love to consider moving them up in the agenda. So we can even make it next if we so choose.
3.5?
Excellent. So is there a motion to make the, change the 10.1 presentation of CAE student awards to 3.5 on the agenda?
So moved.
Aye.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. So we, Ms. Chaff, do you have anything you'd like to say as we start this process? I'm introducing our wonderful high school principal.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Julia Chaff, the principal of Guilford High School. It's my pleasure to bring forward two students this evening to receive the CAE awards. Anushri Ajgankar is, has been a phenomenal force in our school, positive force in our school. She has a dedication to humanitarianism that I find unparalleled in most of our student body. She mobilized students and community members to raise $2,200 in aid for earthquake survivors in Syria and Turkey in 2023. She has been a key member of the Cultural Competence Committee for more than two years, and she was instrumental in gathering over 200 Guilford High School signatures to launch No Place for Hate Initiative within the school community. Those signatures included both students, faculty, and staff. And she's also served as an advocate for gender equality by actively participating in the Feminist Alliance. There's many things here. She's distinguished herself academically and as a leader of her peers. She's a senior class co-president, and she's earned recognition in organizations like the National Honor Society and Leadership Congress. And so, in my opinion, in all endeavors, Anushri is an outstanding person to be a recipient for this award. The second student is Sergio Garcia Perez. He is also, I would say, a passionate advocate for cultural responsiveness and community engagement. He spearheaded the inaugural multicultural festival at Guilford High School this past February, and I would, I would add to that, that he probably started talking to us about this initiative when he was, if not a freshman, then a sophomore. Like, it was a passion of his that he wanted to see to fruition, and he did. In addition, he has served as a volunteer with Art Day Incorporated. This is a Saturday Academy, it's a Saturday Academy where he served as a guitar teacher to young aspiring musicians. He's been a mentor and volunteer in the Cultural Integration Mentoring Program, which is an organization that brings high school students into New Haven to work with and mentor middle school students. And in addition, because of his involvement in Unified Sports, Sergio was recently recognized as the CIAC Connecticut, at the, at the CIAC Connecticut Summit for his efforts with Unified Sports. So again, he's prominent in the community, he's been active in Leadership Congress, he's been active in the Cultural Competence Committee at GHS, and he leaves a strong legacy behind him of cultural responsiveness, which we appreciate, and again, very deserving of this recognition.
Thank you. So I would like to read, if I could, and then we're going to call up our recipients. The Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, so this is CAE, has included a letter to each of these recipients, and I would just like to read the body of the letter out loud. "Congratulations for being chosen to receive CAE's Student Leadership Award. This prestigious award recognizes your distinguished leadership. Leadership is a quality that is hard to define but remains critical to our society. CAE has developed criteria that help to define leadership. Your principal received a list of these criteria and was asked to name Guilford High School students who met them. Your principal considers you a school leader. We are pleased to present you, together with other student leaders across Connecticut, with our 27th Annual CAE Student Leadership Award. You should take pride in the recognition bestowed upon you. We encourage you to continue to use your leadership skills as you take on new challenges. Again, our congratulations and all the best to you in your future endeavors." And certainly, we as a Board of Ed would just like to echo our great appreciation for the many ways that you have contributed to our school community and congratulate you for this award. So first, I'm going to ask Anushri to come up.
Yep. I'll lay this to her.
Yes.
Great. I'm just going to read the actual certificate from CAE to you. "The Connecticut Association of Boards of Education awards this Student Leadership Award to Anushri Ajgankar, Guilford High School, for distinguished leadership in school activities and daily life, awarded this 12th day of April 2024. Congratulations." I'm so happy.
And Sergio, if you would come up.
"The Connecticut Association of Boards of Education awards this Student Leadership Award to Sergio Garcia Perez, Guilford High School, for distinguished leadership in school activities and daily life, awarded this 12th day of April 2024. Congratulations." Thank you, Sergio.
These are fun awards, yes. Yeah. All right. So we are now going to go to number four on the agenda, which is to act on a number of meeting minutes that occurred across April. So first, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the April 1st, 2024, meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any comments or corrections to these minutes? I am hearing none.
None.
All right. So there's a motion to approve and a second. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
All right. All opposed? And then, any abstentions? Mrs. Fennelosa, Ms. Fennelosa needs to abstain, and then I was not at this meeting, so I'm also an abstention, please. All right. April 17th, special meeting. Is there a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of April 17th?
So moved. Second.
Any comments or corrections? These are very brief. These were, these were interviews of prospective candidates. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining.
Moira is abstaining.
I'm abstaining.
And you're abstaining. Well, okay. So two abstentions. Is there a motion to approve April 18th, 2024, special meeting Board of Ed minutes?
So moved. Second.
Again, this was the second night of interviews. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will abstain.
You will abstain?
I will abstain.
And Ms. Fennelosa will also abstain. Okay. All right. April 22nd, 2024 minutes. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
Second.
Okay. Any comments or corrections to these?
Number three, on the very last line of the second paragraph, it's just Mr. Wolowitz's name is misspelled.
Was it misspelled throughout?
No, just that one spot.
Oh, 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 second, oh, I see what you're saying. So the, the first paragraph, the last line of that first paragraph?
Yes, sorry, I thought that was the second paragraph.
Okay. No, no, that's fine. Either way, I just, and then, actually, Ms. Baldwin, I'm going to note that your name is misspelled in the second paragraph.
Oh, my goodness, I did not catch that.
I know. Hold on. Yeah, yes, thank you. I'm going to interrupt for two seconds and just thank the families for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm sorry, again, right, the second paragraph, I guess, under number two in the second sentence, Ms. Baldwin's name, just needs a spelling correction. Anything else here? All right, so there's a motion to approve it in a second. All those in favor of these minutes as amended?
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay, so Mr. Del Ventura abstains and Ms. Fennelosa abstains. And then, please, a motion for the April 29th special meeting minutes. This was the meeting in which we made the determination of how to enact the $835,000 reduction that the Board of Finance took following the referendum. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any comments or corrections? I have one on page five. Under, under the paragraph on Nurses' Aid, there's another paragraph. "In response to a question by Mrs. Rader, Dr. Freeman noted that the," it says excess cost grant, it should say educational cost sharing grant. And then I just had a minor correction on page three, almost halfway down, the paragraph that starts, "Mr. Del Ventura requested that the Board of Education find out if," I would just cross out there or any because it, there's extra words there.
Yeah.
Any other comments or? This is a very conversation-heavy meeting, so kudos. Yes, kudos to Terry, who has to follow the entire conversation all night and, and get it all down. Our great appreciation. Anything else? All right. So there's a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the Monday, April 29th Board of Ed meeting as amended? Please say aye.
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 Abstain.
And Ms. Fennelosa will abstain. All right. Excellent. We are up to number five on the agenda, which is public comments for topics on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to address the board on topics on the agenda? All right. Hearing none, I'm going to turn, turn it to Ms. Rader for the financials for the month.
Thank you. Yep, so I was the reviewer for the financial reports for the month of April 2024, and I'll just run through the, we did go over this in great detail in our Operations Committee meeting prior to this meeting, but I'll give the more broad overview of things. So the expenditures for the month of April 2024 were $5,240,445.34. Our expenditures and encumbrances through the end of April were 78.57%, which is very close to where we were last year, which was at 79.78%. Revenue for April 2024 was $25,110.67, and that includes revenue from Medicaid, charging station revenue, non-resident tuition, pre-K tuition, and tuition from Clinton and Madison. Salaries are pretty much on line with the prior year. Employee benefits are a little lower than the prior year. Purchased services is higher than the prior year. The credit in the dues and fees line is due to correction of a billing, and professional technical services line is higher than the prior year due to our special education study. We talked a little bit about this in our budget conversation. We were doing a very comprehensive study of our special education program and services, and so we are, you know, expending monies to have that study done. Tuition is lower than the prior year. Our supplies and materials is pretty much in line from last year. Capital is lower than the prior year, and there is a credit that you could see if you looked at the warrant around our capital lease for the truck, which we are now reimbursed for. Transportation is lower than the prior year, and so the warrant we are submitting is a total of all payments for the month listed alphabetically, and the total payments for this month on the warrant is $2,409,482.14. Like I said, we go through the warrant and we kind of ask questions and get clarification. There was nothing really to, to note here in the, in the general meeting. You know, every year, we're tracking our expenditures because we close out our annual budget in July, and so we're just tracking our percentage expenses according to last year, and some of them are a little bit over, some of them are under, and so in the next two months, we'll be kind of looking at where we have some encumbrances, which is monies we think we would be spending, but maybe we're not, and adjusting for those. And it feels like we're going to be in, in pretty solid shape. You know, there's nothing, like I said, new to report. There are some areas that we typically run over. There are things you can't predict around sanitation and buildings and grounds. Electricity is very high this year, which I'm sure everyone can understand. It's kind of across the board, and so we're actually going to be looking at that in a little more detail to see if we can identify where there might be some issues in some of our buildings to identify some savings. Yeah, so I don't, like I said, there's not anything that I would call attention to here, but that is the presentation of the warrant, and like I said, we answered some more questions, and if board members have any questions for me, I'm happy to entertain them. Any questions?
All right. As you noted, we did talk more extensively about this in the Board Operations Committee just before this meeting. So I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the expenditures for the month of April 2024.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Communications, do any of my colleagues have communications they've received in the last month that they'd like to share? It's been kind of quiet here. All right. Student representatives, we're up to you. Welcome.
For Melissa Jones, this past week, the new Melissa Jones principal, Mr. Jeff Wolowitz, visited the, visited the school and met students and faculty. He is very excited to begin. The MJS's fourth grade students have been participating in a leadership project with their PE teacher, Coach D, and these fourth grade students have had the opportunity to work alongside Coach D in kindergarten classes and displayed the leadership skills that they have learned. For MJS's first grader, first graders, they recently finished their bird unit with a presentation for parents and visitors. The presentation culminated with students performing songs about birds, and second graders took two field trips, one to the dinosaur state park where the students enjoyed exploring fossils and learning about how to be an observational scientist. They also visited the Mike's Point Nature Center at Hammond-Nassett State Park, and students explored the CT shoreline ecology and learned about one of CT's nicest state parks. Lastly, MJS's third graders visited the US Coast Guard Station in New Haven, and students toured the base, boats, and command center while learning about the Coast Guard's essential duties. Then for Baldwin Middle School, they had S-Back testing. The smarter balance testing is just about done at Baldwin and has gone well, and they have implemented a testing schedule that has minimal impact on their regular school day, on their regular day-to-day school schedule. Make-up for the S-Back and fifth grade science testing will continue through the end of this week. And for grade four to five transitions, parent questionnaires have been sent to the parents of all incoming fourth grade students, and later this month, they will be sharing information about student music selections at BMS next year, and they are also hosting parent information sessions for parents of incoming fifth graders next Monday. And just after Memorial Day, Mr. Hamill will be visiting each fourth grade classroom in all elementary schools to meet the kids and answer their questions. In early June, some current fifth grade students will return to their elementary schools to answer questions from a student's perspective. And there will also be an open house for students and parents to come to the building to meet staff and to become familiar with the school's layout. All these plans are meant to help provide a smooth transition from elementary schools to Baldwin. And for teacher appreciation, many thanks to the PTO and the entire Baldwin community for supporting their work during Teacher Appreciation Week. The treats and surprises for all members of Baldwin staff were wonderful and greatly appreciated. And lastly, for their variety show, this Thursday evening, the Baldwin PTO is hosting a variety show where students can show off their interests and talents. The talent show will take place in the high school's Performing Arts Center, and they give a special thanks to Julie Fitzpatrick for organizing this, and they also wish all those at Baldwin Middle School a very wonderful April vacation.
Okay, so at Guilford Lakes, Principal Ryan sent a very long list of things to talk about, but most recently, for, for Teacher Appreciation Week, the PTO sponsored a lunch catered by Mr. Jase, Mr. Jase Agent Bistro. They also treated the faculty to massages from Empowered Wellness, and they organized yoga sessions by Kristin Sarri of Yoga Therapy Associates. Mr. Bello, the gym teacher at Lakes, with the help of the PTO, arranged for all the fourth graders to come do their mile run at, at the GHS track for all their state testing. The fourth grade Community Service Group organized a firefighter appreciation event where the students wrote thank you cards to, to local firefighters and paraded down a line of Guilford firefighters giving high fives, and at the end of the event, the group gave the firefighters two trays of goodies to take back to the firehouse. Guilford Lakes second graders were amongst the first students to visit the newly renovated Peabody Museum in New Haven to complete and wrap up their units on fossils and pollination. Mr. Piscatelli brought a Japanese maple tree to Guilford Lakes, and so kindergarten students got to watch and help him plant the tree on campus as a way of ending their choose-or-alive unit of study. As a compliment to the second grade's secret world of pollination literacy unit, Tanya Gurich brought in her beekeeping tools so the students could try on the protective wear and interact with all of the tools that she had. And Madison author Amanda Russell visited to read her book, Jacob Learns to Fly, and this book was inspired by her son, who has autism, and shares a message about respecting people's differences and adapting and finding ways to be kind to any special needs friends. And we didn't hear back from the Adams principal, but we scoured the website. Looks like two of the major upcoming events is NGJSS is hosting a trivia contest tomorrow, and all the select ensembles have their concert coming up on May 15.
And at Calvin Leit, grade three and four students held their spring concert on Thursday the 2nd to a full house of family and friends. At each concert, each grade, at the concert, each grade shared three songs alongside the music teacher Nicholas Abraham. Third graders shared Frere Jacques, Down by the Riverside, and Moja Numba. Fourth graders shared Why Shouldn't My Goose, The Frim-Fram Sauce, and The Red River Valley. Third and fourth graders sang together the school song, We Choose Love. And a huge thanks goes out to those who participated in and enjoyed the concert. Third graders also recently had an amazing day at Bushy Hill Nature Center. Students explored the daily living skills and cultural practices of various Native American tribes. Those students had the unique opportunity to sit inside a wigwam and gain insight into how the landscape influenced daily lives. Additionally, everyone had a chance to learn how to shoot an arrow and build a shelter.
I like that. No, 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 this is, yeah, I like it.
To conclude the day, students partnered up to attempt to replicate the notion of rubbing wood on wood and generate heat through friction. Afro Beats Fun artist, artist resident Mason and Young led dance classes with every class recently. Students explored a fusion of traditional West African moves and sounds and contemporary Afro beats. Mason emphasized the importance of creating a healthy sense of self and community where people are nice to one another. people are nice to one another. Sounds good to me. Work as a team to accomplish one common goal and have the confidence to share what they learned. Students thoroughly enjoyed the dance classes and their time with Mason. Came together as a whole school on Thursday to celebrate student learning. Thank you to Mason and the PTO for funding this wonderful Artist in Residence program and volunteer Audrey Barr for organizing it. And home sweet home, the high school. We currently are in the midst of the second week of AP tests and IP tests.
Yeah, this is the last week.
The last, yeah, yeah, can't wait. If anyone wants to pray with me for my calculus grades, we're here for you. Concerts coming up for the end of the year. The band concert is the 22nd, 22nd, yes, it is. Orchestra and chorus are not long after, we're looking forward to those very much. Sports teams are starting to finish up their seasons. Me personally, my last crew race is this Sunday, and it's hard to believe that high school sports is going to end for me in under a week, but I will have good memories from it. So there was an email sent out about reminders for the dress code. As it's getting warmer out, students are having difficulty sometimes defining for themselves what exactly is outlined in the handbook. If this isn't up to standards, I do apologize for the view. Junior prom was a ton of fun, and people are looking forward to senior prom now. We're about in the in-between spot, so getting, finishing the celebrations from the last one and ready for the next one. And more senior events are on the way, including the senior breakfast, the senior outing, the, who knows if there are 10, 12 items on the list. We're looking forward to all of them. More about seniors, people are finalizing their college decisions despite problems with the FAFSA, and it's a very exciting time for all of us to finally have the burden off of deciding and knowing where we're going. And it's hard to believe, but graduation is one month from today.
Yes.
It's so weird to think about.
I must say, when I said May 13 that loud, it's been, I was like, ooh, ooh, yeah, very exciting. Well, that's wonderful. Yeah, so much going on. So it is a good reminder that I do want to make sure we say out loud that Guilford High School graduation is June 13th. I believe that's a Thursday on the Guilford Green. And one of my favorite things about it besides just getting to, to, to watch all of, all of our seniors graduate is that it is really a community event. It's not just parents and families. There are lots of people that come every year because it's just, just a joyous place to be. So, very exciting.
It's not going to rain this year.
Oh, oh, that's right. We were a soggy mess.
God, I couldn't see for our glasses.
Yes, 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 yes.
But it was fun. It was really actually, although it rained, it was amazing.
So much better than being outside with limited tickets.
Yeah, it was amazing, so, rain or shine.
Well, this is great. It sounds like there are wonderful things happening across our schools as usual. And I sit here and I listen to you, and I remember when I sent my kids to Bushy Hill, and I remember when Mr. Piscatelli, who has been supporting our schools for a very long time, so it's just, it's fun to sit and listen as well.
Didn't they do the voyages and vessels, wasn't that last week or?
Oh, yeah, that was recently too.
Yeah, how did that go? Did all vessels survive? They all looked pretty incredible. I saw some pictures online about it, so, yeah.
I'm seeing Ms. Chaff.
Yeah, she might have, he might have a fun. It's just always this iconic thing that some of these students get to do.
Oh, it's such a great class.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't think it's happened yet. I think it's coming up, yes.
June 6?
June, it's early June.
Maybe they're testing them out.
They might have been, they do some, yes, they do some tests. I think the official date for the boat launch is June 6th, I believe. I don't have my calendar with me tonight, but I'm pretty sure that's one of the.
Yeah, because the Facebook post about it was about getting alumni to come back.
To come, yes. This is the 12th year, so they're trying to do a big celebration.
Yes, thank you so much.
I have one small thing to, very small, but this Saturday, Voices and Concert Choir Seniors and whoever else was able to get a ticket are going to the Metropolitan Opera House to see Carmen, and they're going at two, they're going to come back very late in the night, and I'm going on the trip, and we're going to the Hard Rock Cafe.
What a cool trip. Oh, I'm so glad you get to go, that's awesome.
Oh, great.
Yay. Well, thank you all so much. This is terrific.
They probably have things to study for.
And we'll get to see them next month.
Will we get to see, we do get to see you, I think, one more time?
I think it's three days before graduation.
Yes, okay, okay, excellent.
I'm sure you guys will be all with it.
Well, thank you so much. You are free to go. We will be thinking of you all, and those of you who have tests this week, we're positive vibes. Your way. Thank you so much, and have a wonderful time on Saturday, that sounds great.
Thank you.
Dr. Valas, will you see?
Yes.
Boat launch is June 5th.
Boat launch is June 5th.
I have the wrong date, it was the 5th.
Excellent, okay, writing this down. Thank you so much. All right. We're up to superintendent's report. Dr. Freeman couldn't be with us tonight, but we have Mr. Bowden, who's able to fill in.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm going to defer this item to Principal Chaff, and Mr. Gollum will come up, and we're thrilled to bring to you tonight the 2025 planned trip.
Okay.
For the music department, being now post-COVID, and we are, nice to see our staff and students planning trips again. It used to be an annual event, and we had a little blip in our, in our scheduling over the last couple of years, so we're excited to bring this trip to you tonight.
Wonderful.
And I present the wonderful Mark Gollum, who's going to tell you all about it.
For giving Ms. Chaff a lot of exercise tonight.
Thank you, yes. As Mr. Bowden mentioned, the music department's had somewhat of a long history of traveling over the years, and we did experience a little bit of a blip with COVID, if we can call it that, and had a very successful trip a few years ago, two years ago, to, actually, no, it was last year, pardon me, to Washington DC, and have come up with what we think is a wonderful itinerary to take our GHS Wind Ensemble, Voices, and Symphony Orchestra to Italy next year during the April vacation, and the highlights of which include two performances of our ensembles. We also are going to see all of the various sites in and around Florence and Venice, and in Cremona in particular, we'll be visiting some of the string workshops, Cremona being the birthplace of Stradivarius. We'll get to see a performance there on a Stradivarius violin, a solo performance, and have a concert in, in that space as well. We're expecting about 70 or so students to sign up. That's, that's really a rough guess because things have changed a lot since COVID, so that would match what happened in the past, somewhere around 70 to 75 students, as well as an additional 15 to 20, 25 adults or other, other folks traveling along with us. And yeah, we're very, very excited about it and appreciate the support and good thoughts. And if anyone has any questions, I'd, I'd be happy to.
What could we at the town do to support this trip? Because this sounds like a very large undertaking.
Expensive, yeah.
It is, well, it is absolutely expensive. We do have a number of fundraisers that we have planned, so be on the lookout for our signs at car washes. Don't buy your mattresses anywhere but from the Guilford High School Music Department. We'll, we have another fundraiser planned, which we're excited about, which is new, that will be a raffle for a four-day weekend in, in either London or Paris. And so we'll be auctioning that trip off. So those would be some of the things that the community could do, but, you know, just everything you're doing already is, is, has been quite helpful in just helping, helping keeping the program going, so.
Such a great opportunity.
Other questions from Mr. Gollum? I will note, we have in our packet a copy of the letter from Dr. Freeman to Ms. Chaff approving and giving us some information about this trip.
I also have itineraries, if I don't know if people want to see.
Oh, so exciting.
Yes, that'd be great.
Well, Mr. Gollum is handing that out. I do want to note that putting a trip like this together is quite an undertaking, to take 70 students and 25 adults abroad, and I just want to acknowledge, you know, the work that you do mark in, in providing these experiences for our kids. For many of them, it might be the only time they get to do something like this, and having been on a trip in another district to Europe, I have many fond memories of Northern Italy and France, and hope to go back someday. So, you know, I just want to thank you for doing this, not only this time, but all the years you've been doing this. It's, it's wonderful for our students.
And Mr. Gollum, I know this, obviously COVID kind of interrupted this for a while. Would you remind me, I think the music department tries to do this kind of international trip once every four years?
Yes.
Or that had been the pattern?
The pattern had been an international trip every four years, and then a trip within the country that would be available to all of our musicians in the, in the two years, in the middle year in between.
Right, so every other year there was a trip, one of the, every four years it was an international trip.
Correct, yes.
And I, Mr. Bowden, like you, my son got to go to Barcelona with you.
That was the last international trip that we took.
Years ago, and had just an amazing time and playing in different venues and just a wealth of opportunity, so. Other questions?
I just had a quick question. Just, it's traditionally been the Symphony, Voices, and Wind Ensemble. Is there any thought to opening it up to the other, like repertory, or is it just not feasible to do that?
So what we've tried to strive for was that every student, if they were here for four years, would have the opportunity to travel somewhere once, at least once. Because of the sort of rotation, it's hard to do that, to guarantee, so to speak, everyone an international option. I think, I, I think part of it is just the managing the large numbers. If a, a domestic trip with 100, 120 students, believe it or not, is actually relatively manageable, but for, once you, once you start getting those kind of numbers in an international trip, it's, there are a lot of, it's, it's very difficult. I think Mr. Kevin Buno took a trip once to, to Ireland that had over 100, and, and that was a very successful trip, but a very difficult trip, so.
This is, this is terrific, and it's wonderful that the music department is able to start doing this again.
Well, I appreciate your support for this.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Gollum?
The tour cost, the $44.99, is that the expected cost that each family covers, or when you do your fundraisers, does that reduce that number?
That's before fundraising.
That's before fundraisers.
For each, for each travel.
Yes. Well, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for showing the itinerary, this is terrific.
Did everyone get one that wanted one, or?
Dr. Valas, will you see?
Yeah.
With an international trip, does that require a board approval?
We are going to do that tonight.
I do not, no, 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 I don't think we have, I don't think we need to vote on this, and it is not on our.
I thought somebody went to Canada recently, we had to approve it.
In, in my experience, it's, it's been the superintendent approves it and then reports to the board.
And then reports to the board, which is what our letter says, so I think we're all set. If there's a, a need to vote in the future, we can certainly do that, but I, I believe we do not need to do that.
I just want to be sure.
No, it's all, it's very good to check. Yeah, so thank you, I think we're all set.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, wonderful. All right, so we're up to the board agenda. 10.1, we've already covered because we turned it into 3.5, which was the Cabe Student Awards. So now we are at 10.2 to act on personnel items. So first, I'm going to ask for a motion to ratify the appointment of the following teacher, Rebecca Corcoran for Lakes, Special Education Teacher. Is there a motion to ratify this appointment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, okay. We are then asked to please ratify the retirement of the following teachers. Elizabeth Mancini at Guilford Lakes, a social worker with 35 years of experience, and Susan Kane at Cox, physical education with 26 years of experience. Is there a motion to ratify the retirement of these two teachers?
So moved.
So moved.
Second?
I'll do second.
Second, all right? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? And I do want to thank both Elizabeth Mancini and Susan Kane for their many, many, many years of, of service to Guilford Public Schools, great, with great appreciation.
Four of my kids had Mrs. Suzie Kane as their gym teacher.
And, and my kids were at Lakes, so we had the great opportunity to benefit from, from Ms. Mancini's.
And Suzie Kane just has a special place in my heart. I used to run the book fair at AW Cox for, I think it was eight years or seven years or something like that, because she gave up half of her gym twice a year so that I could run that book fair, and she would, we would always donate, make donations to her and thank her properly, but just great memories that I have of my interactions with her, so.
Wonderful, well, great appreciation, certainly to them both. And then we're asked to ratify the resignation of the following teacher, Giancarlo Moreno, Adams Middle School, music, three years of experience. Is there a motion to approve or to ratify this resignation?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, no. And we certainly thank him for his three-year service as well. Okay. 10.3 is to act on acceptance of registrations for 22 kindergarten students under the age of five requesting enrollment in the 24, 25 school year. So, and best to just read it. Effective July 1, 2023, Public Act Number 23208 amended the age of entrance for kindergarten students in the state of Connecticut. Students must have turned five years of age by September 1 of the registration year in order to enroll in school. Parents guardians may request admission for their child born between September 2 and December 31. The respective building principal or designated certified staff assess the child to ensure that admitting such child is developmentally appropriate. So the administration is bringing forward the fact that as of this date, we have 22 students who have been assessed and approved by the building principals for admission to school for the 24, 25 school year, three at Cox, 12 at Jones, four at Lakes, and three at Leit. At this time, the board is respectfully requested to vote to admit these 22 students for the 24, 25 school year. Is there a motion to accept the registrations for these 22 kindergarten students?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments on this?
The only question I have, and without Dr. Freeman here, maybe someone can answer, does the 12 students at Joan present a, an issue with classroom sizes or additional, additional classes needed?
I don't believe that it changes the class, the overall, because I think this was part of our enrollment study. I think these kids were planned for in that study, so it'll be a surprise for us.
Would, would you, and, and I don't know if you know this, Dr. Goss, but it, it may be actually that we see some fewer kids enrolling in kindergarten this year because of the new cutoff, but maybe a tiny bit more next year, but maybe we won't see that play out.
We don't know. The only thing I can say is that prior to looking at our, at how we would manage this transition, we looked at the numbers of students who would ordinarily fall in this range, and 22 is significantly higher than our average.
Okay, right, right.
That suggests to me that there were just happened to be, yes.
Okay, yeah, yeah. No, 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 that's right, it, it, there was a.
So I, I'm hopeful that we aren't going to see. So I'm hopeful that we aren't going to see any really significant shift and that over time, this will just be a sort of a gradual, as parents can plan.
Right. Okay. Wonderful. So we have a motion. Oh, any other questions first, our conversation? Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. No. Okay. 10.4, we're asked to approve the disposal of obsolete materials. Such an odd. Obsolete materials valued over $2,000, elementary school Bridges Math Program, and Lucy Cawkins Literacy Units. So we are occasionally asked to do this. These are resources at Guilford Lakes Elementary that the school will not be using anymore. But because of the value, we are asked, again, to approve the request to discard these resource materials. Is there a motion to approve, again, the disposal of these materials?
So moved. A second.
Any questions or comments about this? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Okay. All in favor. 10.5 is to approve a donation of $2,520 from the Calvin Leet PTO for the purchase of a Gaga Ball pit. I think we've approved another one at a different place recently.
Yes.
Because we had a whole conversation about this, right?
Yes. What Gaga Ball?
And what was Gaga Ball. Right. My kids played it at camp. All right. So is there a motion to approve this donation from the Calvin Leet Elementary School PTO?
So moved. Second.
Any comments or questions? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think that's everybody. Excellent. Thank you to the Calvin Leet PTO for your support of our students. Okay. 10.6, approve a donation of $1,550 from the Guilford Dugout Club for dugout enhancements. We have a letter here which describes these as a helmet rack, shelving, bulletin board, turfis bags, and a field rake. Is there a motion to approve this donation from the Guilford Dugout Club?
So moved.
Second.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. That's everybody. Wonderful. And also our thank you to the many booster clubs that support our student athletes. 10.7 is a donation of $3,505 from the Guilford Dugout Club for the salary of an assistant coach. So this would be an assistant baseball coach. Is there a motion to approve this donation?
So moved. Second.
Any comments or questions?
Is this for this year's season or next year's season?
I just want to understand if funds are being donated to pay the salary of an assistant coach. I'm not sure. Do we know if this is this year's baseball season or?
I believe it's this year's.
This year's. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Trudeau. Any other questions? All right. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor of the donation, of approving the donation, again, $3,505 from the Guilford Dugout Club for the salary of an assistant coach. Aye?
Aye.
That's everybody. All right. Thank you. 10.8 is to approve a donation of exercise equipment in memory of Tristan Peterson, valued at $2,425 to the Guilford High School Physical Education and Athletic Departments. This is a donation of three ARC, A R C, trainers and one exercise bike. Is there a motion to approve this donation?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions about this? All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. That's everybody.
It's in memory of person.
It is. It is wonderful. Absolutely. Okay. Item 10.10 was to receive for possible action, the option to participate in employee... Oh, no. Sorry, I'm reading the wrong thing. 10.9, sorry, going out of order here. There's a very long list here in front of us, was to act on the District Diversity and Hiring Plan Draft. We are going to hold this agenda item because we are still waiting for the state of Connecticut to review the District Diversity and Hiring Plan. So this will come back to us after, and if there's any feedback from the state, that requires an update to the proposed plan. 10.10 is to receive for possible action an option to participate in the Employee Vision Plan. I'm going to start us off and then we ask for a little help for a brief explanation of this. But our health insurance coverage is, has an additional opportunity for us for the next three years, which is to offer our employees the option to participate in an employee vision plan. This offer would not require any expenditure by the Guilford Public Schools or the Guilford Board of Ed, but would provide for employees who wish to participate at a very small cost, the opportunity to then have a vision plan as part of their coverage.
The plan currently covers their annual exams, their current medical coverage. So this would be an expansion to kind of cover eyeglasses, contact lenses, things like of that nature.
Mrs. Trudeau, may I ask if I've missed anything important that we'd want to mention? We did discuss this in some detail in the Operations Committee meeting.
No. The only thing that I would add is that this is also being offered to the town of Guilford employees.
Thank you. Yes, that's important.
And the Board of Selectmen have already approved this for the town's employees.
Excellent. Thank you.
It's also important to point out that, you know, through due diligence and negotiations through our healthcare policies, it's, these are, these are things that get added on to our healthcare plan. So yes, we have seen a decline in our overall premiums and our price, but it's through skillful negotiations that we get added benefits like this.
Absolutely. All right. So is, based on our conversation in the Operations Committee meeting, I believe we are comfortable voting on this tonight. So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve this option to participate in the Employee Vision Plan for our Board of Ed employees.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. That's everybody. Thank you. And then 10.11 is a receive item only. The town and the Board of Education did receive the annual audit report. Each Board of Ed member has received several very long reports that we can review, but we did and will be voting on next month. We did discuss this a little bit in the Operations Committee, and you'll hear me say this now and likely hear me repeat this next month, which is a great deal of thanks and an appreciation to our business manager, Mrs. Trudeau, and her staff, because part of why we receive, as we have this time again, really excellent audit reports is because of the great deal of care and effort and expertise that she puts in to our finances and managing finances and tracking documentation, et cetera. So thank you very much. Again, this is a receive item. So there will be further discussion next month. Also, a receive item tonight is 10.12, the Pension Fund Report. So we will have an opportunity, we have received this, we'll have an opportunity to dive in some more, and we'll then be discussing this again at our next month's meeting. And then we have an agenda item that we added at the beginning of this meeting, 10.13, which is to act on additional participation in the Slim Nation program. This is a program that Board of Ed employees have had the opportunity to participate in two or three times so far, I think.
Three years?
Three years, maybe. It's, it's, it's a program that is offered both to Board of Ed and town employees. Those who have taken part and have really kind of given great positive feedback on their experience in the plan. The cost of this is covered from our medical fund balance. So it is paid for. This program related to health is paid for by those funds. And we're being asked to act on the opportunity to offer it yet again to employees. So is there a motion to approve additional participation in this Slim Nation program?
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. That's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Up to reports of committees. 11.1. Does a policy committee have anything to report?
No. Our meeting was postponed, so we'll be meeting again, I think, end of June.
Okay. Wonderful. Mr. Delventura, anything more from the Operations Committee?
No, we covered a lot. You know, obviously, the Employee Vision Plan, we talked about the audit report, the Pension Fund Report was reviewed. Really nothing else to add from the Operations Committee. We'll cover more facilities in our next meeting.
Okay.
So nothing really to add.
Terrific. Thank you. Dr. Hurst, Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee?
We meet May 28. Can be looking at a number of areas, including the impact of technology on our learning.
Wonderful. Any liaisons to town committees have any, anything to report out?
I do.
You do?
I do.
Wonderful.
So normally, I am more professional at these meetings, but today I'm wearing a sweatshirt representing Guilford Pride. I am on the committee for Guilford Pride. We are entering our second year. And the event is this Saturday on the Green from 12 to 4. There's approximately 35 vendors, which is almost, I think, double what we had last year. There's more food trucks. There's also a proclamation, painting the sidewalk. There's a little march at 1 o'clock. Last year, it was very well attended, and it was such a great day, just of happiness and belonging and education and being able to support local vendors who want to support this effort. So I highly recommend everybody coming out. I know that Ms. Chaff was there last year. It was great to see her. I got her picture a few times. So, yeah, we're welcoming the whole community and
Wonderful.
we got full support of the town, and I think it's going to be great.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for making sure we all heard that. Any other, any other town committees? All righty. And we need to get a new liaison to the Learn Board of Directors, so that, no report out on that. We're up to number 12, which is public comments to the board. These do not have to be on the board agenda. Does anyone have a public comment they'd like to share? I'm just going to ask if you would give your, your name and address?
Sure.
And try to stay within three minutes.
Okay. I do have a question about that. So Alyssa Stevens, 135 Nelson Drive. So I do have some comments that I prepared. They're about two minutes over the three minutes. So I was wondering if that's okay?
I'm sorry?
My comments are about two minutes over the three minute.
If you can keep them to three minutes, which is just really something that's
Okay. I'll move something to the next one.
But you should feel free to submit comments to us as well. That'd be great.
So first, I want to start by expressing my appreciation for the thoughtfulness of the discussion that you had recently in regards to how to reduce the budget as required by the Board of Finance. There was consideration for the Summer Pathways Program to be eliminated as a way to help reduce the budget, and there were questions and comments about the size of the program. I did want to note that per prior meeting minutes, it appears that actually 220 students participated in the program last summer. So while these students may come from about 80 to 90 families, I think it's helpful to know that the total number of students that this program benefited is higher than that 80 to 90 that I think was discussed. I also want to share some comments for consideration as we get ready to close out one school year and plan for the next. So in regards to district equity, it feels like across district that they're, between elementary schools, it's, they're sort of operating in silos. So for example, I've heard there seems to be one school that has a little more leeway to opt out of participating in certain district-wide professional development. And also, who administers their dibbles is different. It may be special ed teachers in one building and regular ed teachers in another building. Also, access for students to use Lexia at home seems to vary school to school. Some schools do whole or half-day field days, but one school had a field hour last year. While I don't think it'd be realistic to expect that these things are done exactly the same across district, there does seem to be some room for things to be a little more equitable. For example, all students are sent home with their Lexia login info at the beginning of the year. The more continuity we can provide across grade level and between elementary schools, the better chance we have of our kids entering Baldwin in a way that does not make it feel like they're coming from four different districts. Perhaps there could be somewhat regular meetings of all grade-level teachers across district to plan and collaborate. In regards to SRBI and universal screening, back in January, there were some public comments about SRBI and the use of universal screeners. Dr. Freeman and Dr. Goss did provide some additional information on that topic. And Dr. Freeman generally said, "We don't employ universal screeners or whole-grade or whole-school assessments to the degree or in the way that many other, mostly larger districts around the state of Connecticut do. We employ them in thoughtful, integrated ways that continue to prioritize the diagnostic and instructional excellence of our classroom teachers. We don't use universal assessments or screeners to sort and level or pull out students out of mainstream instruction. And over the last couple of years, we've talked about a model of acceleration rather than remediation." Dr. Goss had advised that many districts do use commercial products as universal screeners and that we do universal screeners that are embedded in the work we are doing in the classroom anyways, and that we have universal screeners at all levels in literacy and math, just not separately purchased commercial products. Related to my daughter's learning journey, I've seen, I've read a lot about universal screeners, and I'm surprised to hear that our universal screeners are embedded in the work that we are doing in the classroom based on what I've read. I found a helpful document on the State Department of Education website that describes the characteristics of universal screener assessments identified in the professional literature. And in short, it states that universal screeners are accessible to all students, assess critical skills and concepts, they're brief, under 10 minutes, easy to administer and score, given to all students, like across a district, a school, a grade level, or a course. They have a quick turnaround time, one to three days of aggregated and disaggregated data to classroom teachers. They're repeatable and reliable. Commercial assessments have undergone psychometric analysis to determine reliability. A teacher-made assessment cannot be referred to as reliable if it has not been analyzed by a psychometrician. So multiple-tiered systems of support, or SRBI as we call it, follows the public health model. These approaches focus on what we should do for all. Then using data, it applies evidence-based approaches to the continuing needs of some individuals and intensive strategies for a few individuals with the most significant needs. Without appropriate screening from the beginning, we cannot expect for this system to work as intended. It seems in order to effectively employ the SRBI process, we should be using a commercial product universal screener for math in addition to the state-required commercial product universal screener we now have in place for literacy.
Okay. I'm going, I'm going to ask you to try to wrap it up.
Okay. I can end there. So I would just, I guess, recommend that we kind of look at our SRBI process and the universal screeners in district.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else from the public, I guess? No. All righty. So we did add a executive session. I'm sorry. Anything for number 13? Closing comments? I do not have any.
To remind the community that we have a town meeting next Tuesday night.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Oh, my God.
Tomorrow.
Thank you. I'm in a different room. Yes, that there's a town meeting tomorrow night at 7:30.
Is it at the high school?
Yeah.
All right. So we did add an executive session at the beginning of the meeting. We will be going into executive session again to prepare for evaluation of the superintendent. It is that time of year. We do this every spring. When we come out, there will be no further discussion nor further votes. We will simply, the only vote we will have is to, in fact, adjourn the meeting. So I want to thank anyone watching us and certainly thank those who came to the meeting tonight. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you.